Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my country and to its citizens. And to the republic which stands aloneation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the February 15th, 2024 meeting of the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board. We are, we are, we have our understudies tonight. Ron Gaynor is not here, Steve Gab is not here, Cheryl is not here. We have amazing pinch hitters. I think this would be a great all-star baseball team, but it is also not our regular cast, so bear-
We've got a deep bench.
We've got a deep bench. Bear with us as we try it out. It may not be the perfectly most smooth board meeting you've seen. Please call the roll.
Joe Burden?
Yeah.
Dennis Gagnon?
Here.
Peter Lewis, not here. Laura O'Connell? Neil Tolman?
Here.
Heidi Wendell?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman?
Here. Okay, great. Let's have a motion to approve the minutes from the January board meeting.
It's a move.
Thank you, second. Thank you, corrections, deletions, additions. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Excellent, okay, first order of business is RKB Trucking, Horson's Trail. I believe we are checking the resolution of the one comment in the approval resolution. I don't know if we have any, Jason?
I mean, Ron and I spoke while he's on vacation and he had some things he wanted me to clarify. Everything should be, oh. Jason Center with Beatty and Watson representing the applicant, RKB Materials. And he, we worked that out and he's prepared the resolution, which you have before you right now.
Okay, well, I need a motion to adopt a negative secret exploration for RKB Trucking. May I have a motion that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis, second.
Second.
Thank you, Neil, comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes. And the approval resolution, I need your permission effectively to sign on our behalf for this approval resolution for RKB. May I have a motion that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir, second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. I will sign in due course. Jason, thank you very much, sir, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Garrison Golf Course, PDD slash Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. I think our plan tonight was to acknowledge or see the most recent set of plans, and we have a referral from the town board for the zoning code change. I understand this hearing was still left open by the town board, and so we've been asked in our, I would describe as an unofficial capacity to comment since it's not, not our response. We have our town deputy supervisor who has the burden of voting on that matter, but we can comment, but Adam, do you want to say some things?
Sure, thank you. Adam Stalero, Cy Paget, and Rozelle on behalf of Shakespeare Festival. The board did get a new version of the zoning amendment from the town board since the last town board meeting that incorporates changes that were requested by the town board. The changes to the zoning amendment that you have now that are, hopefully you have the red line version, are more restrictive than what you saw before and more restrictive than the version that was studied in the EIS. So, in particular, there are now restrictions on the amount of time that the artist lodging can be let, can be occupied both by artists and by guests. Both of those uses were studied in the EIS. It clarifies now that minor structures that are allowed have to be non-residential. And the most significant change was that where special events could, in the existing zoning, special events are allowed by a parade permit. That's a permit that can be issued by the town supervisor. The revisions to the zoning amendments now require that for a special event to be held at the Shakespeare property, that it has to go through the special use permit rules in the zoning code with the town board as the approving agency for the special use permit. That's a substantially more involved process involving a public hearing, and it wouldn't just be in the hands of the town supervisor. It would be voted on by the whole town board. And there's a whole process in the zoning code for putting those applications, the special use permit applications in.
How often does that get renewed?
What's that?
How long, how often does the parade permit get renewed? Or do you have to reapply? Is it a year, is it a year or six months or whatever?
I guess it would depend on the type of event that they're proposing, whether it's a recurring event or whether it's an event that's a one-day or one-weekend event.
Yeah, they, if they, if that's about a year, it may require a special use permit. They have to get one for every event they walk.
And what about the permit that they're working under now?
Well, if you mean to have today?
Yes.
It's under a parade permit right now.
And how often does that have to be renewed? Once a year?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
This special use permit is not just Shakespeare's or-
Oh, I understand, yeah. Just trying to play catch-up here a little bit.
Yeah, the special use permit is not intended to be for the theater events. Those are covered, those are a allowed use under the list of permitted uses. So, a special event would be something that is not one of the permitted uses.
Okay, oh, okay.
So, our, the board has now had the site plan set, I think, since December. The town staff have as well. It's our understanding that the town engineer had either no or minimal comments, technical comments, on the site plan. So, really what we're looking for at this point are the board's, you know, the board's input on any, you know, questions or comments on the site plan as well as getting input from the public. You know, the project is now at a critical juncture in the timeline, and that's why when we were here at the January meeting, we requested that the, you know, even though we had not received the zoning amendment approval from the town board, that the planning board set a public hearing for the next meeting conditional on the zoning amendment being approved. We would make that request again tonight. I understand that there may be some hesitancy on the part of the board to do that. So, also, you know, I would just say that in the alternative, and my client is equally happy to do this, is that if we get the zoning approval at the town board's March 7th meeting, that we be able to write to the planning board on the 8th and say, "We've gotten our approval." Can we set a public hearing date for, you know, for the agenda on the planning board's March calendar?
Okay, so, thank you for that. So, the purpose of this item on the agenda is so we can answer the town board's request to comment on the zoning ordinance change. Adam, do you want to just explain to the, this, Adam? Do you want to explain to my colleagues what our requirement is and/or the responsibility of the town board to listen to what the town, the planning board has to say about law changes?
Yeah, certainly if this board has comments on the proposed revisions to the local law, communicate them. That would be then communicated to the town board to take into consideration. My understanding is the town board is meeting on March 7. So, if this board has any comments, suggestions about the proposed law, it should be articulated tonight. We'll communicate it to the town board, and hopefully the town board will act on and respond to those recommendations.
Just so everyone's clear, on night of Saturday, we have a public hearing. Finish the public hearing. It's, I think it's at 7 o'clock. I know it means 7:30. The public hearing is still open until that time.
Okay, so, let's entertain that conversation. Any board members have any comments on the zoning change? And as Adam, I'm sorry, your last, your last name is?
Stalero.
Stalero, I don't want to confuse it with Adam. And your Adam last name is, sorry?
Rod.
Rod, okay, there you go. Well, our Adam S. and Adam R. will be sufficient. Any comments from Adam S.'s commentary about what's changed in the zoning law that's being proposed? Anyone want to raise any issues? Again, we, this is non-binding, this is more, the town board kindly asked our opinion, and if we'd like to share an opinion that we have the majority view on, we'll transmit those to the town board. Anybody have any comments? Heidi, please.
I do, but I, should I wait for others to go first or?
You are going first. You are the firster.
Okay.
Be first.
I, my, I have two comments. One, I have an issue with the special use language in the proposed legislation. I, and I think it's, it's kind of confusing to say that the special use provision of PDD just passes through to this new situation because special uses of the property as it stands with a golf course and the limited structures were likely to be much, much more limited than might happen under the current plan. So, I think you can't just take the word "special use" and say, "Well, the no action included special use, so it just passes through." Those special uses contemplated there in the PDD are completely different than I think could happen if the development takes place. So, to me, I personally recommend to the town board that special use be required to have some direct connection with the Shakespeare Festival. It should not be, in other words, it shouldn't be a broad grant essentially to seek a permit for a rock concert, for example. It should have to be related to the mission of the Shakespeare Festival in some way. And I think that there should be a limit on how many can be issued a year so that neighbors don't have to worry that it's gonna, that if, that that would be the money-making, that it, in other words, that the mission would change over from the Shakespeare Festival sort of to a concert venue of some kind. So, that people, and I do think that we addressed these issues in the scoping document contrary to the letter submitted by Cy Paget because we talked about noise, you know, I don't, you know, we talked, we heard a lot from people, neighbors and others concerned about the noise. Community character issue, I think, also relates to special use. So, there were a number of different aspects, I think, traffic. A lot of different aspects of the scoping document relate to this issue, even if they didn't have the particular language "special use." So, I really think it should be very limited, not very many during the year to ensure that this isn't like a new business model for the Shakespeare Festival and that there's a limited impact on the community by the special use. The other issue I have is with the-
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Sorry, Kelly, I should have said, can you just make sure you're capturing all these comments? Because I think what we're gonna have to do is, or we, I guess we can go to the video later, but we're gonna have to, I don't know what your preferred method is, but I think we're gonna have to just catalog these comments for the, I mean, obviously we have our, we have our depth supervisor, I'm sure he's writing them down furiously. You want a pen? You got a pen? Anyway, but let's just keep going. All right, so I just want to pause and, all right, keep going, Heidi, sorry.
Well, rather than, you know, repeat myself, so I'll just, and then my other problem is with the, is a similar type of problem with the, with the sort of Airbnb-ing of the artist housing. It's, you know, I think during the hearing and the whole secret process, we were trying to push back on the notion that this property could be kind of rented out. That should not be the business purpose of this site. It should be all Shakespeare Festival-related, in my opinion. There could be an occasional use of, you know, a guest house, but it should not be, in my opinion, the proposed legislation makes it look like the business could move from Shakespeare Festival to kind of Airbnb-ing that portion of the property and having a concert venue, essentially. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Heidi, others?
I have a couple. Regarding the artist lodging, I would like to see clarity on where the staff is staying. They refer to the artists, the performers themselves, but I'm assuming that there's staff that's gonna be there full-time and how they're gonna, or where they're gonna stay. And then also, there's a comment within the document regarding short-term, on a short-term basis, renting out to guests of the property owner. And that is pretty broad. So, I'd like to have that clarified. The other item which brought to my attention was the signage regarding a 16-foot height maximum, which is kind of high. And there's no mention of the illumination of the sign and how it would be illuminated. I know, I believe that there is a code issue regarding interior illumination of signs. And when we go up Route 9 and we see that big monster billboard on the side of the road, I don't think that's what we really want to see down in Garrison at that site. So, that I would like to have really mentioned or reviewed by the town board.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Dennis, others?
Nothing that's not gonna repeat, Heidi and Dennis.
Okay, there were else? Okay, I'm just, I'll add, I guess I'll echo Heidi's second comment. I'm mindful of the several letters we've received related to the artist housing and then the, just to quote, "When not being used by performers, artist lodging may be rented to guests of the property owner on a temporary, short-term basis, provided the artist lodging shall not, shall in no event be used as the primary residence of any individual nor occupied by any artist for more than nine months or any guests for more than a month consecutive." And I think the open-ended nature of that additional temporary, short-term basis of what that means, I think, would benefit from some clarification. And I think, again, I'm just mindful that we spent a lot of time, the applicant was very thoughtful about when they removed the 60-room, I think it was 60-room hotel, that this has a potential to be akin to that in terms of scope, and I think it's just worthy of clarifying the town board's intention on that. No more comments on the zoning law? No, okay. I think it's worthy of responding, Adam, as you requested. We don't generally have to respond to requests, but I want to address what you said, and I think we've, you've made the same request before. I'll tell you my opinion, I'll let the rest of the board weigh in. I think it is very confusing for the public to have contingent meetings. We have to notice things ahead of time, we have real noticing requirements, and have multiple public hearings from multiple municipality government entities at the same time is not in the public's, in my opinion, the public's best interest. We, this project, and for all your concerns about speed, is going at a blistering pace relative to Hudson Highlands Reserve. I think we are trying our best to be judicious, and the only incremental time that this costs is frankly the one month between the town board concluding its work and us picking it back up. So, I don't think what we're doing is an overdue burden on you, and I do think in the weight of our, at least I believe strongly in transparency and public input to make sure they're heard. And I think in the benefit of clarity and simplicity, that is the, at least my opinion. I'll let my colleagues, if they have a different view, speak, but I think the simplicity of having the next public hearing be after the conclusion of an existing one and make that as a definitive and clear break is useful. I don't know if colleagues, Heidi, please.
I agree, and I think it's, as I said at the last meeting, I think it's much more respectful to people who are speaking at the public hearing to not make a conditional decision. In fact, yeah, so I really think it should not be done.
Are there comments?
No, I agree. I think you, it's prudent to wrap up one, procedurally prudent to wrap one up, one public hearing before we start another one. I don't think that's a stretch.
Those comments are well-taken. That's why I suggested that we do things in order by, you know, if we, if the town board does conclude the public hearing.
This is a once-a-month board meeting. We are volunteers who all have day jobs, being attentive to things via email and then noticing, we've got staff that has, I don't want to do a back-and-forth here. We heard you, we understand you've made the ask, I think we have a view. We're trying, we have tried to be thoughtful and accelerate this where possible and take all considerations. This particular one, when there's multiple entities involved, we're trying to keep the lanes clean. And I think the confusion the public has had over the contingent meeting that we agreed to last time, I think, is indicative to me that is not in the public benefit. So, here you totally, and we are, I promise you, when that's done, we will pick up our next piece with haste.
Okay, I just, you know, we will make that request by writing after we get the zoning amendment. I mean, I, things get calendared in between meetings, all the, I mean, you set agendas in between meetings, and it, this construction is at a critical point in order to get construction started if the project is gonna get underway this summer. And to have one meeting where we, the only point of the meeting is to stand up and ask if we can schedule a public hearing is detrimental to the project, so we'll make that request in writing.
All right, thank you. All right, next, any other business on this topic? All right, Kresnicki Plaza?
Neil, can I just ask one thing?
Yeah, please.
About the letter that was sent to us from John Benjamin?
Sure.
About the noise, whether, I was wondering if, I didn't, I was unable to attend the town board hearing, but I wondered if that letter got answered. I just-
Jason, can you just hold on for a sec, please?
Throw that out there. A concern by Mr. Benjamin about whether we actually have the mechanisms to measure noise in the town, and I assume there's an answer, but I'm just noting that.
I distinctly recall us talking about it with the applicant at one of the earlier meetings. You had bought equipment or something, and that you were gonna lend it to or give it to the town board or something?
That's the, that's the plan under the noise protocol, is that HWSF will have the equipment, they will do the measurements, and at the end of the required period, they will give that equipment to the town.
Okay, great, great.
I distinctly remember that discussion. All right, thank you for raising it, Heidi.
I think we have a request that, we don't have it, but they, they don't even have it today. They lease it, buy our local, somebody else, oh, yes, that's their overall.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, sorry. Krasnicki Plaza, please. Sorry, I apologize. It's all, they're all different, I mean, all our names are different, I guess. You know, we'd all be Smith then, otherwise, so. All right, sir, the floor is yours after, I assume you have a change after the moratorium on oil.
Correct. Just by way of introduction, Adam Thiberg, Inside Engineering Survey.
Another Adam, very popular for those with a mic tonight.
Adam T.
Adam T., oh my god, perfect. RST, wow.
Representing Kresnicki Plaza LLC, I'm joined by Tim Kresnicki. So, yes, a lot has happened since this was last before you. The message on the previous site plan was received and has now obviously been codified by the town board, and the applicant's now just looking to move forward with a zoning-compliant alternative plan. So, the applicant's decided to forego the heating-oil-storage component of the site plan. The, just to get into the site plan a little bit, the front building and the outdoor storage proposal remains essentially the same. The building will house their fencing business operation and will only provide office space and just general storage for their heating-oil business. There'll be no heating-oil storage on-site. As previously proposed, there's an outdoor storage and equipment area behind that building that conforms to the regulations in the HC Zone. The change in the site plan is primarily in the rear of the property. As mentioned, the oil storage tanks have been removed, and a second building has been added. It should be noted that this does not result in any additional impervious surfaces or ground disturbance, those are essentially the same as in the previous plan. And like the previous plan, there are no encroachments into the watercourse buffer area. The second building will be divided into units and will be offered for rent as contractor offices and storage space to electricians, plumbers, and similar operations. We've put together a fairly exhaustive statement of use, and we've added a use table to the site plan that lays out the potential users of the site, vehicle trips in and out, et cetera. It should also be noted that the second building would, at least to start, only be built out as a single-floor floor plan, but a mezzanine office space could potentially be constructed internally at the request of a potential tenant. That being the case, we've run all of the zoning and parking calculations based on the maximum potential build-out of that building. And so, that's kind of a summary of the changes, and we're happy to hear any questions or feedback you might have.
Questions? None?
Where are you with the DOT on this, with the entrance?
We've met with the DOT onsite, gone over the site plan, and we're instructed on more or less exactly where the entrance should be. And we're gonna be starting, you know, formal permitting with them in the near term.
Soon.
Yes.
You're gonna, we're gonna have that whole conversation about what size trucks are going in and out? Are they, you know, tri-axles or trailers and all that to make the sweep? We've had, we have that conversation every time on Route 9? Oh, you've actually been in on a couple of these.
Of course, yeah, and we'll definitely provide, we may have provided, but I, I'll check. If not, we'll certainly provide vehicle maneuvers. In the statement of use, we also outlined the types of vehicles that would be coming in and out of the site. I think the largest would be just for the fencing operation. I think we said it would be, you know, a truck with a trailer, potentially, something of that nature, but mostly box trucks and things of that scale.
And you're aware that, I'm sure you know that the people on East Mountain Road North are very aware of the sight lines looking south when they're trying to pull out. You know that's coming.
Yeah, we're aware of all that, yeah. We're sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors on East Mountain Road. Obviously, in initial version of the project, we showed it as a through-loop that seemed through and exited onto East Mountain Road. Due to the concerns of the neighbors, we've obviously eliminated that, and we've reconfigured the driveway so that, you know, you can turn around and you can have our entrance and exit both on Route 9. And again, we've had that preliminary meeting with DOT that was basically instructed us exactly where to put the driveway.
Others?
No, that's it.
Dennis?
I don't know if you had listed it or I missed it, but regarding signage for your use and also future tenants, what are you envisioning for that roadside?
Yeah, so we have shown a sign on the site plan that'll meet the code. We haven't, you know, detailed what that sign will look like, but it'll be similar, you know, I remember going through the process on previous projects. It'll be similar to the other, you know, signs that you see on that. It'll be a wood construction sign, it'll meet the dimensional standards, and we'll get you details on that going forward.
And obviously depending on your tenants, so.
Of course, right.
Heidi? I'm sorry, Laura?
So, can I just ask, what's the next step for these guys?
Well, our next step is we, I think we're gonna debate after we're done asking questions about whether we need another site visit. So, but any questions in the project for them?
Yeah, well, okay, so, so in your current set, oh, sorry. So, in your current set, just a couple of comments that I would think that we should just flag. So, one is there is a tree removal plan that you've included. We should have a chart to understand exactly how many trees are being removed. It's quite a lot, and I think, you know, you've kind of gone through this round. I think we're concerned with the trees that are over about two feet in diameter and anything larger than that. So, I would just kind of like outline that.
We'll take a look at what are defined as regulated trees by the code, and we'll get you that for sure.
Great. The other thing too is, just based upon the entrance of this site, and since you are part of the site next to it, the concern that I can kind of see is the stacking of those entrances and the adjacencies to that. I know that it's as of right, but if there is a truck that is on your site and then another truck on the other site, there's a bottleneck of what the view shed is south and north. So, I'm just gonna say that, like, it is a little bit of a concern because the entrances to both sites are so close.
Right, and again, the distances between the driveway are DOT-prescribed, but we'll definitely take a look at site distances in either direction, and we'll take that into consideration when we do that.
And then the only other last thing is, between the two buildings and all the, and the storage, you guys are really gonna have to lay out how trucks come in and out and have that turning radius to be able to understand.
Absolutely.
You know, like, I don't know if, like, if you had two trucks possibly, once you hit three, it gets a bit tight in that back area.
Yeah, we don't anticipate there being, you know, three or four trucks just sitting back there. I think the intent is, you know, the building in the back is gonna be fitted with overhead doors, and generally, the vehicles of any potential tenant would either be parked in one of the designated parking spaces or be in the, in the building. And we've designed this area here to be clear and for, strictly for maneuvering. There's not going to be, you know, vehicles just sitting here. We have parking right here, we've got a building that can store vehicles there. So, the area in between is specifically designed strictly for maneuvering.
But you're gonna do that.
And we'll show you vehicle maneuvers and how we get in and out and everything else, yes.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, I was wondering if you could talk to the-
Yeah, just, I was wondering if you could talk to the, like, the illumination, I brought it up during the site visit that we had, but the lighting, like, is it going to be illuminated during the nighttime, and is it going to be on some kind of schedule, or is it, yeah, if you could explain some of that, that'd be great.
So, up at, the, the lights in the front, you know, against Route 9, are going to be switch operated, and they'll, they'll be operated by the applicant. The lighting that's shown in the back will run on photo cells during regular business hours. After that, they'll run on motion sensors, and that'll just be for security purposes. So, they'll, they will be off, on off hours unless they're tripped by, you know, a motion sensor. And then, that would be on a timer, so it's not going to kick on and just be on for the rest of the night.
Thank you.
Other questions? Heidi?
I'd love to have another site visit, because it's hard for me to picture what the storage area would look like, the 8,800 square feet of, you know, open storage.
The storage is no different than what was, than what we were able to see, that you, if you remember, the, there was, it was fairly dense in there, so we, I think what we got you was stakes at this corner, we got you the corner of this building, this corner of this building, this corner of this building, and I think we got, you saw this stake as well. So, it's not going to be any different than what, at least as far as the outdoor storage goes, it's not going to be any different than what you saw last time.
So, let's come, if you don't mind, I want to, the second time we've raised, can I, let me just ask a couple of questions myself, and then we can come and debate that con, because I do have a couple of content questions first. So, can you just remind me, and maybe the applicant explain, I'm confused about, because I don't, still don't remember, what was the, the purpose was obviously a 90,000, I forget the number of gallons, a large number of gallons storage of fuel oil, and then it was what? What was the other purpose at the time?
So, the two, the two purposes, or the applicant has two businesses, they have a heating oil business and they have a fencing business. So, the fencing operation, as we discussed, you know, taking place on the site remains the same. It's the, it's the other operation that has been curtailed in that there will not be oil storage on the site.
What is the new, what else are you erecting on this space, then?
So, previously, there had been a canopy that was pertinent to the heating oil operation, there were the tanks, and then there was just a big turnaround.
Correct.
And, and that, so that, all of that is now gone.
So, what is now being added? What is the new use?
This building.
But, I, to do what?
So.
Because I read here, it says, in our, in Ron's note, it says, this would contain separate rental spaces for contractor uses. So, just can you explain the business purpose of what you're trying to add now?
Sure, so, again, the, the building would be, you know, would be divided into units that could be rented out to contractors for office and storage, and those contractors could be electricians, plumbers, carpenters, and, and the like.
You're building a rental, a commercial rental facility?
For contractors to, to rent, yes.
Adam, I don't know if this is in your purview, is your pinch hitting, is that, is that a use allowed in this?
I would have to check on that.
Okay.
So, I don't know off the top of my head, but we'll, we'll.
This is the use that was approved in the same zone, same thing we're talking about on the, the property next door that was approved. It falls under, under the town definition of service business, and that was, that was discussed early on in the process with the property next door, which of course is in the same zone.
I'm just saying, the, in the previous incarnation of this idea, there was no rental, rental business being created.
Not in the previous version.
So, there's a new, a new use you've created to, I, does, does your client own this property now?
Yes.
Okay, fine, so we're trying to figure out how to monetize what was the asset, I take it, and, and that's not a criticism, it's just, period, he just didn't, one, he, originally, if this was a better idea, he would have created a rental business, but now he's decided to create a rental business.
This isn't the first choice?
Understood.
The first choice was.
Understood, okay, got it, all right, let's come, now, that's all I have, so let's come back to the question of site visit, thoughts around, Heidi wants a site visit, other thoughts?
I personally don't need one.
You don't need one?
No, neither.
Don't need one?
No.
Don't need one? Joe?
I would like one.
Okay, that's two, I, I actually, I actually kind of think we do, because I think, frankly, not for my own sake, because I have a pretty good memory, but I think giving the town a board member, not board, the community members who are, I must say, besides Hudson Highlands, Hudson Valley Shakespeare's Festival, we've never had more people attend a site visit in my 11 years on this board, and I think the volume of interest from the public is not insignificant at that corner. Now, I think that was probably because of the oil, not because of the location alone, but the location itself seems to evince a great deal of interest. And so, frankly, if it's not too much of a burden, I do think you're going to be, you, you are a neighbor now, you're not, you're not a prospective one, you're a current one, and I think it may be neighborly of you to explain to folks what's changed, and frankly, I think it's to your benefit.
Welcome, it's fine.
Thank you, that's really mature of you, and I appreciate that. So, I, board members, feel free, if those who don't need to attend, I will go, Joe or Heidi or all three of us, and if you want to come, great, but I honestly think it's as much for the, the, the public as it is for us.
Sure, understood. Now.
But we, I need to vote on that, because I'm not sure I have a, I'm not sure I have a, a majority of want to vote for it, so, if you don't mind, let's just take a vote, all in favor of a site visit, to, all in favor, say aye, one, two, three, all opposed? One, two, three?
I mean, I might show up anyway.
Well, you can't, we won't be anything to show up for if we can't vote for it, because we have, we, we have only six of us, and so we've got to, so I'm going to take one more time, it's okay to vote against it, it'd be the first time a site visit was not approved, it was kind of fun, all in favor of a site visit, say aye, one, two, three, four, five, five, one vote no, it's always good to have a no vote, please Kelly, record a five to one voter in a site visit. I, I did not, I did not, I did not, that's not fair, does anyone feel like I strong-armed them, and so we'll take another vote?
No.
What day, what day?
Yeah, you're busy anyway.
Yeah.
Kelly, do you want to take, take the calendar out and suggest?
You brought coffee last time, right?
You don't have to bring anything, don't do anything.
I know what we're pulling to.
You don't even, just send him, you don't even need to come.
I know what to do with it.
Stake the corners of the, of the buildings.
I think that is important.
Do we have to do the balloons, it's not to be, to be.
Forget the balloons, just stake the corners of the buildings.
Okay.
I have one more question if you don't mind asking. I know you're not having oil storage on, on this facility, but you're still running a lot of business, are you planning to store oil trucks on site overnight? Because, I mean, I don't know where your clientele is, but if you have clientele on this side and your oil's on your side of the county, it'd be beneficial for you to be parking trucks at night at that facility, so I'm, I'm just asking, is that in the site plan, or is that part of the use that you already have in there?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, it, there could potentially be, there would be vehicles that would be stored there.
We're planning to move to this new facility completely and not run anything out of our current facility now, so, yeah, there would be some trucks that would be stored.
Oil trucks?
Yeah, correct. Those are planned to be purposely left to the front building. We purposely left the front building, at least it's planned right now that this third, this, or this two thirds of this portion of the property here is going to be all warehoused, basically, and it's deep enough so that it'll fit the trucks, and I could fit two trucks in tandem, basically, so that is planned to park in there, and then this also happens to be asphalted, so if there is any potential concern, that, that's sealed from the ground.
Do you think they need to have store oil trucks there, or drains to pick up oil, like they're doing for right there up there on Route 9? They have to have some special, correct me if I'm wrong, but they did have some type of special, in their permit to move forward to catch oil on the drains, right? Like this, just asking, okay, so.
The only thing, Bob, that I can see that, that, I, I sort of know what you're getting at, but, I mean, it, do you plan on washing vehicles on the, on the property?
Probably here and there, whenever they get dirty.
Okay, but, okay, well, we're going to have to talk about that, too. You know the new MS4 permits came out, and there's a new provision in there about washing down vehicles and how you might need a, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a nod, you know what I'm talking about.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that, and we'll, we'll annotate anything on the, on the plan to make sure that, you know, any of those activities, if.
Because it's a, it's a new thing, so, I don't, I'm not aware of any, any storage, I know, I see what you're getting at, but I'm not, I'm, I haven't come across anything like that.
On, on my current record, property force speed, we expect a storage, right, there's some kind of concern about trucks leaking oil and stuff on that ground.
From the, from the oil container, you're talking about from the tanker or from the truck?
From the trucks themselves.
From the trucks themselves, okay, that's an MS4 issue that we're going to have to have to talk about, yeah. Okay.
We'll get you more definitive answers on those, and we'll, we'll make sure it's, it's clear on the plan.
Okay, back to Kelly on a date, please.
So, in March, you have March 10th, the 17th, or the 24th?
When's your next meeting?
20.
24th is Saturday, no?
10th, okay, Sunday, March 10th?
Sunday, March 10th?
Would we still be able to ticket?
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm sorry?
Would we still be able to get for the March meeting after the visit?
Would you still be able to what?
Would we still be able to be on the March meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We would talk about it, the Mar, the March meeting is, the March meeting is on the 21st, exactly when I'm on spring break with the kids, so I wonder who would like to be, anyway, March 10th? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, March 10th it is, 9:30 a.m.
9:30.
Okay.
What, what, where are we with the tree clearing on this? You're coming into the, you know, you're coming into that time of year, what, what is it, the March 1st, what's the bad, what's the bad, I would forget.
Yeah.
Sometime April.
It's March 31st.
You need to clear this in April, essentially.
Uh, no, in March.
Or, I'm sorry, in March, right, it's up till, March 30th is the, okay, so.
Correct.
So, what are you, well, I guess, what are you thinking? You thinking that you, are you hoping to get these, are you geared up to get these trees cleared out in April?
I think last time we ran into this, I think we talked about getting a, just a letter of approval that could be turned over to the building department that permitted just the clearing of the trees and, and nothing else, ahead of the dead, ahead of that deadline, because, yes, you know, if you, if you missed, if you missed that.
You're, you're just going to send you back.
Then there's no construction until November.
Right, so let's, let, I mean, I know you already talked about it, but I think that would be a good component for your site visit, is to make that very clear, not just to the board, but to the people attending, I mean, then you might want to, I mean, you might want to tape them, I mean, you don't want any nonsense at this point, because you're going to need to take them down.
Yeah, we could, we could potentially tape a perimeter, you know, because we're, it's, it's the interior of the site.
Right.
So, we could, we could tape an, and a perimeter of where those would be cleared.
Like, just, okay.
Okay, you all right?
Yeah, I just want to respond to Neil's comment about the trees, we need to be careful about that.
Oh.
We need to be careful about that, because remember, or, because you guys weren't here last meeting, Hudson Highlands came and asked for the same thing, to kind of move ahead, right, with tree clearing, and we kind of got hit with the other project that happened.
On 403.
On 403, so I just want to just put it out there.
I think it is a bad policy for us to keep doing things prospectively before things are done. I think it is, I think there's a real world situation, if we're nearing done of an approval process, it's one thing, the 403 thing, I believe, was basically a month away from the approval process, they were basically done, but when we get caught in this thing, like, we're not, we didn't create the bats, but we, but we have a process we got to live by, and approving things prematurely is, I think, we understand what our, the applicant's staff wants to do, they want us to move things fast, but I think we also have a process we have to abide by, so we have to continue that balancing act, so let's all be mindful as we make, and each decision is different. I'm not, I'm not worried about precedent as much as making sure we're making each decision on a similar basis. Okay, so we've got a site visit planned, you guys will be ready, and.
Yeah, and for clarity, we're going to stake the corners of the building, we are not going to float balloons this time, we'll, we'll stake the corners of the building, and we'll give a perimeter of the clearing area.
Yeah, and Kelly, you and Cheryl will work on noticing that hearing, I mean, we've got some time, but I, again, given, as I, I'll just repeat this, given the attention that the last site visit had, and I think there was something like 70 people there in a very, not thimble, what's it called when they have all the pricker bushes, ramble? No, what's it called? Whatever, thicket, it was quite a thicket we were going through there, so.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, it'll be helpful to have the public there to see that the project is different than what was previously proposed.
That's correct, that's my.
So, there isn't confusion going forward, so.
I think that's, that's my sense. All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, last item is a new project in front of us, new business, Mace at 429 Sprout Brook Road. We have a memo from Ron about this one. Uh, sure, sure. It just, I, all I need you to do is come up to the mic and speak so the folks at home who are watching with rapt attention can view it. Thank you, sir.
You're, you're doing the drawings?
Good evening, Keith Stata, Harrochon in Engineering, we're representing the applicant, Mason Carville, for 429 Sprout Brook Road. With us tonight also is the project architect, Hudson Design. Currently at 429 Sprout Brook Road, there is an existing house, driveway, and a shed, and a small turnaround area for the cars, there's no, currently, there's no garage. So, this project is simply to construct a detached garage so they can have a place to park their cars and keep them out of the weather. We had a pre-application meeting with one of the board members and the building inspector and Ron Gaynor, we had some direction from that meeting, we proceeded to prepare the site plans, as you see, we just received comments yesterday from Mr. Gaynor, and we are not sure what the next step is right now, but I see what he, what his expected actions are for this evening. I hand it out to you tonight, we're, we're looking for a special use permit, obviously the, if you saw the plans, the entire site is essentially quite greater than the 20% slope. There are a couple pockets where the slopes are less than 20%, and in that little handout I showed you, we could potentially show a garage in that white area, the garage is in red, and the driveway extension is in red as well. So, based on what Ron was indicating, we can show a spot on site where the structure itself would be on a slope of less than 20%. And according to Mr. Gaynor, that would keep this project within the bounds of the planning board, as opposed to having to go to zoning board to seek, I'm not sure what, I guess, a variance, but we're hoping we don't have to go down that road, so, the detached garage is two-story, I don't know if Washington, you want to just show real quick what, what we're, what we're showing here. The lower level will be accessed at the driveway, so we, the cars in, and the second level will access in the backyard with a covered porch, the upstairs will be a, a workshop for the applicant. So, that requires disturbance in the 20% slopes where we're, where we're showing the proposed garage right now, as you can see. Lower level driveway back, upper level in the back, so they can access at grade the backyard. If we were to try to put the garage where we're showing it in red, it would require a, a lot more work, the driveway would be located right along the existing house, I mean, right on the edge of the porch, and it would be higher in elevation, so it would be quite a bit of more disturbance to get the garage to the location shown in red. So, we feel the location we have on the, on our site plan is the best, best fit for what they need, and I think it works, so, I'm not sure procedurally where to go from here, I see what Ron says in his memo, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Well, look, I'm just going to ask you the direct question, which is, Ron states very clearly, and we've seen this many times, that you, you need to be able to provide the analysis to show that whether the proposed garage could be constructed within the areas of the site which contains slopes of less than 20%. If so, we can do that, have you done that analysis?
Yes.
That's, well, this picture, I'm not sure I can tell from this picture.
Well, I can answer, and I just, I got the memo yesterday, so.
Right, so I think that, I think that's the, to answer your point about procedure, I think that's the procedure, and so, I, I'm not, I'm not faulting you, I, I'm not an engineer, so I can't, I can't adjudicate, this is, we generally see where there's a, some numbers that are shown to us, like, I, I just can't tell you if this is me and the criteria, and I think I'd be. the criteria, and I think I'd be pretty...
I just wanted to give you a visual for tonight to...
I'm, I'm not criticizing, I'm saying, I'm just saying, I can't say, yes, this is sufficient to let us process it, that it actually answers the mail. And unfortunately, Ron is not here tonight. So, and I think for us to schedule a public here, sorry, a, a site visit when we may have to push this to the ZBA, seems premature. And again, until I feel like, until we know that we actually have demonstrated that you can actually do this within the confines of the planning board's purview, then we can't do anything right now. So, my, my ask of you, and it's unfortunate, is that, let's get Ron to look at this, let's him say, yes, this meets the, the, the analysis needed to show that you can do this within the twenties, less than twenty percent, and then we'll schedule the site visit.
Okay. So, am I, will I be adjourned to the next meeting, or the...
Yeah, I mean, the, the challenge is that I just can't...
I get it. So, at the next meeting, we can, hopefully, Ron will concur with what I'm giving him.
I'm sure he'll concur with you when you two, you two will talk...
Yes.
Long before that.
And then we'll schedule a site meeting.
Site, we'll do a site visit.
At the next meeting, we can hopefully, at that point, schedule a public hearing for the April meeting.
Yeah, uh, yeah, uh, yes, we could, we could probably do that. I think right now, what we can do, I think it's, since it's no workup, anyone's back to declare this a minor project. I don't mind taking that vote, and I think acknowledging it's type-two secret, I think we can do that now as well. But let me, before we go on, do my colleagues have any questions about the project? No? Does anyone see it differently, what we have to do?
No, it's just proven out.
Okay, so let's just take a vote on, can we declare this, the Mace residential site plan a minor project, have a motion to that fact?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Adam, I don't believe we have to take a vote on type-two. I think we just declare it, or do, am I wrong?
Uh, I would vote on it as a type-two.
Okay, well, may I have a motion to declare this a type-two secret action? Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. So, again, as I'm, I'm just pleased, you, you work with Ron. If you don't get a hold of him, Kelly or I will just make sure that, but he's pretty responsive. I don't know how long, does anyone know how long he's on this, is he just, just this week?
This junket that he's on?
This week? Okay, so I'm sure he'll get back to you next week. And I feel like we'll be relatively straightforward to decide, and at that point, you'll know whether you have to go to the zoning board.
Correct.
All right, sorry for that, sorry for the, the, the challenge there. I guess we could also, I'd like to hold on, making the referrals to planning and such. I think involving other agencies at this point feels premature. Thoughts?
Who's gonna get referred to?
Planning, conservation, usually we do fire, I think, but I think it's premature.
I agree.
Yeah? Yeah, okay, fine. Fine, so let's move on. Thank you, sir. Any new business for the board? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you all for joining the February meeting, the town, Phil, town planning board. I look forward to seeing you all in April.
Thank you.